All right, guys, it's six o'clock, it's getting started. All right, an entertaining motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
All in favor, please say aye. Jason's gonna be here fifteen, twenty minutes, he said. All right, so, we brought in the discussion items. Were we gonna go budget first, or just, we wanna do the choice first? So, we had a parent group, I guess, Elisa? You're the one who talked to me, correct?
Sure, Jason had a question. I'm gonna say how, Eric Hartliff, about contacting parents that did a tweet out and attending interact to talk about thirty different families. The packet of information that was in the board report, the beginning of June, talked about concerns of families that have offered our district. And then there was a discussion to have a meeting tonight with further discussions. She had said that in progress, that she wouldn't be available for this meeting. And there are some families that think for tonight, if they wanna discuss further information on that. Or if we wanna discuss the concerns that were brought up, and how we can address those specifically, smaller class sizes, better communication, enrichment programs, intervention, curriculum, and if, I don't know if any of the parents wanna address their concerns for tonight, or what we can do as a board, or want to do, to try to attempt to regain two hundred and thirty-seven kids that are crosser families that have left.
Well, I don't, from my point of view, I don't think we will regain. Certainly not all, I mean, if I had my kid going Patterson somewhere, and then with their thirty-five, ten years, I mean, I keep them there regardless of that happen. But I do think, moving forward, we need to know why they chose to leave, if nothing else. The flip side of that, and then I've contacted a handful myself, and of course, people I know probably, different concerns than, or maybe people you know or agents. Of the half a dozen families I contacted, it was all, all COVID there, a hundred percent. And play a little bit of devil's advocate before we get going, we also have, just shy of a hundred kids a choice in. So, with that said, were the parents here, wanted to say something? Not too much? Okay.
I, I talked with Peggy, Peggy thought that it was, and I don't wanna speak for you, but, kind of to, paraphrase, what she talked about was that, in fact, she,
Mark? I don't think you're gonna have to sit up, so.
We're only that easy. So, Peggy talked about kind of a two-pronged perspective interview process, to where we're, we're, you know, we retouch base with some of those parents, and say, kind of, is it, is it a possibility that you would choose and choice back then, or, you know, choose Crosser again? If so, how, how would we begin to choose this? And then, with those parents you choice in, to say also, why did you choose Crosser? And so, we're looking at needs that we can address, and ways that we can make right for some of those parents who choice out, or see if they're interested, inquire about it. But then also, strengths that we have, that we can also enhance. And so, if there's a thing there about like, well, I chose them because of, that's not so great, science program. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's unsafe, considering that's a, same instance. We actually can help bolster those programs, and even average, I think, if those are something, if there's comments.
I think at very minimum, we should ask slash require, reasonable, explanation's not the right word, but, some information as to why, if they do choose, choice out, they do that. So, we know, you know, we know ahead of time, we're not scratching our heads.
I think it should be both ways, Andy, I think, the information on, why people choose, choice out, I know it, I can see that form, but, I mean, it doesn't, it really doesn't require a lot of information on why you're choosing to choice out, or why you're choosing to choice in. But I think, it would really help us, if maybe, this summer, we could look at that form, and maybe tweak it a bit, and, and really look at, like, Elisa will say, why they're, they're choicing out, but also look at why people are choosing in, choosing to come into Crosser District too. So that we can sit down, and really have a good discussion on, you know, what can we do, what, what, what can we do to make this a better place, for people to keep their, wanna keep their children here? And what we're doing right, and then what we're doing wrong too, so that we can fix that. And I think the only way we're gonna get that is to go to the source, and I know during the summertime, is when all parents have to contact both their, their district that they, they're choosing to enter, and their home district, and they have to take care of that paperwork. And so, I think this would be the ideal time for us to look at that form, fix it, so that we can get some of that good data that we need, and then go from that, and, and take care of business.
If I'm wrong, that, but that's a yearly, they have, it's not like one time, maybe.
Every year. Every school year.
It's like this name, isn't it? That's like past, for next year.
To have choice out. We get them, we get them late in the year, and so, say, we, we've had step one, where it doesn't get, starting position, it gets in trouble, or, parents don't like peer group, so that choice can happen later in the year as well. Districts are pretty likely to receive F B. So, like, we'll take a kid, you know, if it's late.
So, a lot of times, my, my memory of it, but, a lot of times, those things really don't start showing up until August. I mean, those kids that are already there, comfortable, you know, they, the prin, those principals make it, ask for those before the end of the school year, but, a lot of them are gonna show up in, again, late, late July for, when they're really, gonna get all the, those, those papers. So, I'd really like to have us glean better information off those forms.
Well, we can, I can work with the director on kind of revamping that form. I think, kind of, speaking to what Elisa was talking about, that we talked about developing a strategic plan, Jason, Andy, and I. And so, that information is vital, when we start looking at constructing a strategic plan, both around strengths and weaknesses. So, they talk about like a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats.
Right.
Right? And so, I think it, especially with new education providers going in, to really take a hard look and examine what services we provide, what people like, what people dislike, why people are choosing out, so, to really do a deeper dive. It was, you know, that report was pretty thorough, that Eric provided, some of the, some of the comments from some district employees, that they felt like some of the, some of the input was based upon who the person was, in fact, we had some people say, I know exactly who that is, and they don't, you know, they don't like me, and it's nothing to do with the district. So, kind of doing a deeper dive on some of that.
Yeah, I found the same thing for parents that we know, the families we knew, it was COVID related. And one family, I really bothered, had just gone to high school, went to check, and then they decided to buy into the, the whole high school's program online. And she wanted to go back, and she said, we've invested all this money, you're getting good at home, you know, so, now we know people come from high school, and get some masks, and, you know.
But in fairness, a lot of families do choose to, they like that, that smaller school setting, they like, you know, I mean, Patterson offers that unique, small, class-sized setting, and, and I know a lot of families chose that, as their reason for wanting to go to Patterson. But I know a lot of families choice into Crosser for a lot of other reasons that, and I think, I think if we're really wanting to take a good look at this, we need to really look at all of the data, and, and then decide how we need to make our progress.
There are things, I mean, Crosser used to be the, I, I think we are still in some ways, the kids didn't get lost in shuffle, right? And so, embedded within the collective bargaining agreement, there is, you know, we have Wednesday early releases. And so, really, that, that timeline is, we hope that it would be focused towards curriculum alignment throughout the district. But we could easily shift that to say, we want parent contact. We do do conferences a couple times, a couple times a year, kind of like a dentist appointment, you're gonna have a couple dentist appointments a year, yeah, yeah, to, to check things over, and see how the student's progress is. So, yeah, I would say that some of those things, we could talk about strategies, and how we wanna address them, and build those relationships.
We, we're an open district right now, so we take from outside the district.
Yeah, that was a move that the board made early on, after I, the budget forecast is pretty grand, because it's clear, so.
I was making sure you weren't gonna get lost.
Um, I was part of the group that tried to collect, and we all had different contacts. Um, and from the dozens of different scenarios, if people left because of COVID, they, what they went to, they found it was so much more, just offered their kids so much more, whether it was another district, or private school, or homeschooling. And I think that, as we talked about, as you guys were talking about this, and saying, well, that it's COVID, it's COVID, maybe that's what put, you know, made them look for another opportunity. But I think when they had the opportunity to compare, I've heard so many parents say, I can't bring my kid back here, because it would be a step down academically. It would be a step down socially, where their kid is currently, it's maybe behaviors that are maintained, for a lot of different reasons, expectations in a different school, or at a totally different level. And so, I think that, we just, as you guys are talking about, well, it's COVID, yeah, it's, it maybe, maybe that was the impetus that pushed people to look for things. And I think that you're right, you're probably not gonna get these people back, because they found something that they really like. But I think like Erica's report kind of said, let's stop the bleeding. We, we want our local district to be somewhere that we're proud of, that kids, and parents want to bring their kids to. And when I think about the parents that I talk to, and they're driving their kids to Richmond, or Kennewick, that's like a huge eye-opener. If you're willing to drive thirty or forty-five minutes, each, you know, each way, to find something else, and you're willing to do that five days a week, that's a lot of work. And so, you know, I hope that you guys read the detailed list of things, and I hope that you do ask parents what's going on, because, I think it's academic, I think, you know, that the comments were academic, the comments were classroom control, and just the lack of authority that maybe, maybe it comes from the state, maybe there's, maybe hands are tied. But that would be good for the district to say, we know these things are going on, here's the rules at the state level, that limit us, then we can go after the state, and say, hey, this is not okay. Instead, you guys feeling like you're back up against the wall, 'cause you're limited, then let us know, let us know that, hey, these are the rules, did you know? This is coming from state level, 'cause parents don't know, all they see is what's in front of them. And we want to, we really wanna have our district be a place where people flock again, 'cause it, we do not have a good name right now. And it's not because of the teachers who are working so hard, there's just so many different aspects that are falling apart, so, that's my view.
I think, to follow up on that, with Ezra's point, you know, COVID sent kids somewhere else, but they still had the mask when they went to a different school. You know, it was a point of finding somewhere, so if they had to follow the same regulations, all the schools had the same regulations. Started the conversation, it was, stop the bleeding, see why people are leaving, it's twice as a budget, the number of kids that have left is equal to the deficit, they saved the deficit by half a million dollars. We have open enrollment with other districts, so if the kids expelled from that district, we can take them here, is that right? And there were behavior problems in that, that they were expelled from the district, we can take them here. So, are we like a last, a last choice option for the hungry kids that are coming in?
The way that, the way that expulsions work, is that if somebody puts a child, if somebody expels a child, somebody else has to, so it exists in the state. It's, it's a stream power the principal has, to say that for a calendar year, the child is not allowed in any district in the state of Washington, unless some people have set it. We typically don't. Same thing that we, you know, we kind of try to go do the diligence, to find out if students are, there's behavioral concerns at all, or attendance concerns at all, that, you know, certain cases that, maybe the student who's receiving will take more work administratively.
Can we say no, can we say no to a student from another district, if they're expelled?
Yeah, right, you can revoke, you can revoke their choice in form. We had, you know, this interesting case where, Rambu School District actually did that to us. They had a student who had, he's having some discipline issues, instead of go through suspension expulsion process, they just said, we're gonna revoke your choice status. So, the student showed up at, at our,
But they were a Crosser resident.
They were a Crosser resident, but it had gone to school with, the student had gone to school with the same core of students, in Rambu, for like five or six years, so.
You know, and not all students that want to come here are, are kids that didn't succeed somewhere else. A lot of children that are choicing in, are choicing in because they're being bullied in their, in their home district. They're experiencing, they're experiencing prejudice, or they're in a classroom that is not a good fit for their child. And so, the parents are contacting our district, and asking if they can,
Have that information, I mean, I thought your point was good, that we should get that information, no place going out, but why not? We need that information, and we need to,
That's right, that's why I asked you, but what I heard you say, it was like, you were thinking that all of these hundred kids are problem children, and they're not.
Then that was a misunderstanding.
Yeah, they are kids that are, for whatever reason, needing a safe place to go to school.
I'm sure, I'm sure there's a few here and there that are running second chance.
Or third chance.
But I would say that the majority probably are either on the border, and want to go here, have friends here, or like sports here, or whatever.
Let's find out, since, but.
No, I agree.
Yeah.
Absolutely, we should change, we should change the forms to require some more information, and we should start entering as soon as possible too.
That's the point, I wouldn't make some of the kids that went to smaller schools, say Christian school, or whatever. Part of that choice might have been from the parents that they get to go to school, like when their home district was Patterson. And then we didn't have to do the at-home thing. I have my third girl, her third grade dance, and that I didn't show my kid, it's not easy, you know? If you can get them in a school where they're actually in front of the teacher, it's much better for them, you know, I just want them at that point, yeah.
Of the six families I spoke to, it had nothing to do with masks, or anything else, just the fact they were open in person, we, there's three schools involved, since so Christian, one was all with Bible, which I had, and then Patterson.
Everybody can't go that far.
But they have, Bible has a less than this, and they're cool, they have a waiting list for each grade.
Well, that's why they ended up there, 'cause Patterson already did it.
No, because people basically want their kids in school.
Yeah, there are some things about a parochial education that say that we couldn't compete with until this week. And so, this week, the Supreme Court ruled on Kennedy versus Barrington. And so, they're, they redefine the, the case ruling before was Lemon versus Kirk's, and they called eleven laws. And so, schools couldn't, basically, the separation between church and state, schools, schools didn't have that, initiated by adults. So, that was, well, this week, where they said, employees of school districts, we have the right to, right? I, I think that, you know, is an interesting thing, and sort of actually, for some services that parents like, about parochial schools being offered in public setting.
I was just gonna follow up on your statement about the six families that you wanna talk to, did they, have they, their students returned back for this year, so they left for COVID, and just still haven't come back?
In fact, the overwhelming thing I thought, when I asked if they were going to come back, is at this point, they have new friends, you know, a year and a half, two years, some of them have been there, now, I don't know.
So, we can,
You might consider also the notion that a large number of families that moved into this district over the last twenty or thirty years, going age in the athletic program.
So, we can work on sending this earlier.
Yeah, I have a statement, I think some of the discussion has been good, but love has been theory. The only thing we know for a fact is, one, Erica had done an excellent job pulling together that report, and quantifying the number of individuals. And we do know for a fact that we had a hundred students choice in, we had two hundred and thirty-seven choice outs, so net deficit of a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty students. And that helps solve the budget problem pretty readily. Okay, so, all this discussion about why people do this, like that analysis, doesn't matter, the facts are, the net deficit in our district, okay? So, let's get that ball rolling right away. Whether, why they came back never mattered, but I think one thing is really important, is our experience of Brandy High School, and let's quantify, when these kids don't come back, you got that hole as those kids age. You know, let's quantify through this search we're gonna do, that the kids leaving elementary, that they're leaving middle school, they're leaving high school. You know, I was really, really actually moved by the individual that spoke about the Running Start program, and the kids are leaving the school because of Running Start. And that's pretty powerful, her statement, with her four students, there's quite a bit of other data, that presented in that report, that Erica drew up. And so, it's not important going to the, the number of students that left, when they're actually leaving. So, we know that if they leave, we think, through our discussion, that they may not come back, when are they leaving? And that's where we make the intervention, so I think that's important to understand, when they leave as well.
Mr. Olson, a student chooses to go into the Running Start program, do they have to, do they have a form that they also need to fill out, kind of like choice now, of the district into Running Start, so that they, we would also be able to glean information that way, or is that an assumption?
And technically, they're still our students.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Technically, they're still our students.
Right.
So, they're enrolled.
So, we're losing a lot of their F B.
We are, the money policy's still there, so.
Is that something that we could start polling, when, I'm sure that, is it the counseling office, somebody is tracking that those kids are leaving Crosser School District on-site education, and going to Running Start? I mean, I, our, our two daughters, one decided her junior year, she was doing Running Start, and she did Running Start, because she was ready for certain. Our second daughter had the same opportunity, and she was like, no way, I like high school, I'm doing high school. And so, and I left the choice, obviously, I left the choice up to the girls, what they might do. But, we should be able to track that information, that sounds like that's another detail, that are they choosing Running Start, or what, or we should be able to track why they're making that choice? Are they doing it so they can graduate early, or because we're not offering courses that they need here at the high school, or?
Yeah, we just didn't have the rigor in our, in our schedule, to be able to compete with that. And then, beyond that, you have the opportunity of transferring, transferring, yeah, and so, it's pretty easy to transfer to Running Start. And then, beyond that, financially, it's a good move for a lot of families, to say, you know, you have, you can get close to maybe, some kids do graduation at maybe,
We had eleven actually.
Yeah.
And I know Amy graduated the night before her high school graduation, or anything.
Yeah, yeah, and it takes a lot of work, and it cuts out a lot of the social activities from high school, but, for, for a lot of students, that's a great, great move financially, because their, their parents may not have, college funds available, or things like that, so.
Shy was all about the plan, I mean, she wanted high school, and experience, and all, she was like, no, I'm out of here.
Yeah, yeah, and so, we, like I said, we couldn't really compete with that, we did have the rigor, we're building that in.
Okay.
And then, beyond that, I think that our counseling and student services department has really pushed students to take classes.
Okay.
And we heard from Claire Delphi that, you know, she'd said, for her child, it was, you know, she wasn't gonna take very long, she wasn't going to do a partial standard of seniority. They really pushed her to take several courses, and have, yeah, a well-rounded education.
All right.
I can see in the hammer, and Mark, I don't think it works.
Oh, it was me.
Yes, yes, and you know, I was a counselor here at the high school, and I think Mrs. Wilson has spoke to some of the things that you're talking about at your last meeting. And she talked about the rigor, and the difference in rigor that now exists, and what it existed when she graduated in two thousand thirteen. And what I know that I'm personally concerned about, I read a lot of kids' scholarship applications, this last year, I read seventy-five. A lot of them had gone to C B C, but I also know kids really do wanna stay in Crosser, they used to. And so, it would be good if you really reflected on why they're leaving, it's not just for the C B C, it's the classes that they have, that we used to have, that we don't have anymore. And I don't know why algebra is not being taught at the middle school. Mister, this guy brought that up, we're not teaching physics at the high school anymore. We were teaching A P Biology, classes of this nature, and those are no longer, and so, when you're looking at, we had our children go to the Crosser District from Mabton, because of the, actually, what a great place Crosser is, and the academics that you have. So, when you're looking at all these things, and you're looking at also increasing class sizes, and the fourth, you know, fourth grade, fifth grade classes, that's gonna kind of wreck your product, which is the kids. So, you know, I, I hope you look on, you look at this statistically, and like he said, not just sit here and, and kind of wonder what, what it is causing. Because I can tell you, it's the academics at the high school, and when you have wonderful teachers, but they have to be able to teach the classes.
When he ties into the budget discussion too, going forward, are we gonna be able to take many of the savings, and fully fund everything, have a balanced budget, so we can replace the retiring teachers, have small class sizes, to have more rigorous classes? Can we bring back algebra? Can we bring calculus? Can we have A P classes? Can we do it, and turn it around for this year? We have thirty days to get that done, or is that, you know, out the window, or can it happen for next year? I think, we can't gloss over this, I think it needs to be part of discussing and planning the budget. I think it needs to be important, we can't say, thank you for your tax dollars, thank you for voting on things, we don't really care that you left, I think that's not a smart move for this district going forward. Especially when we pass the levy by thirty-seven, by a second term.
I mean, I appreciate the comments by Susie, but, there was some discussion about potentially withdrawing in start, and it runs starts for some kids, but, I can't not say anything about the work that's been done to, in, offer college and high school classes into enrollment. So, I just went downstairs for a quick, and here's just, I don't know if you, I think we have like thirty classes that are offered for high school, college credit, so, if you're not seeing this document. I'm not sure Mr. Olson, he hasn't seen it. So, we do offer opportunities for kids to earn college credits that are from four-year colleges, and as well as C B C, and other stuff.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know going all the way back, I can graduate in the seventh, she did Running Start for two years, and then my youngest actually did it too. And so, we've had classes then, we have some classes now.
Five years ago, we had two classes that offered college credit, and now we have. It takes me back to it, so, yeah, but the community doesn't, we've had fairs, but not everybody knows about them, so, yeah. Everybody knows about Running Start, but, I mean, when kids leave with a transcript with twenty college credits, English one oh one, psych one oh one, and English two oh one, that's pretty powerful.
I don't think, even if we offer the same classes C B C, though, I don't think, I don't think, even if we offer the same classes CBC, there's no denying that.
No, a student has a choice to leave and choose. Yes, and extracurricular. It's the relationships, it's extracurricular, it's the wanting to be part of the, the school culture and the community that helps keep the kids here. Obviously, the college credit helps, but we offer that here.
Yeah.
And then it comes down to numbers issues. I know there was some classes that Suzie had brought up that are no longer, aren't, aren't offered. And sometimes that's because that moment is high enough, but it should be nice to be able to have some class, smaller classes that are needed by certain that population of students.
But I think in the past, the district honored the numbers. So they would have kids with a calculus class with twelve kids in it because they felt that that was too important for them.
I thought you said. I'm just gonna say, running start has been around for so long that parents are familiar with it and they know that here's thirty thousand dollars I'm going to save if my kid goes to CBC or YBC. The college and the classroom is fairly new, so we need to do an informational list three of getting information out there to parents. Letting know about all these opportunities because of college and classroom, it's the whole FTE states here across, we don't lose any money at all. So a lot of districts are small feet, too easy to.
But it's no out-of-pocket cost to our students. They, they don't have to buy their books, they don't have to.
Yeah.
Year and then that. And they're, and they're still having high schools. They still have that connection with the staff and their students and all of their stuff.
I know with my youngest, the only reason he went to school seemed really just to go to school. He took whatever the minimum, you know, to stay in school. But that's just the way he was.
Just to echo kind of what you said. So not only informing parents, but having, having counseling and student services have a really focused conversation with students about what they want. So um I was just looking online, I use this uh in my interview, the Walter Payton School of College Prep School in Chicago. They have access to like AP Mandarin, AP Calc. And so they actually leave school with really marketable experiences. So that's what we're looking for too, right? The counselors to say, what do you want to be in this role, right? What do you want your job to be? And then to kind of guide the student through that process, say, well, we have classes here. Or, you know what, they have a couple of classes at CBC that might interest you. If that's, you know, depending on what field they want to go into. So, but having resources here and then also having people that can direct kids, try tech the same way, right? We have students who want to become well-versed or electricians. So try tech's a really great option for that. So really within our student services, having conversations with students about what they want to, what they want to do after high school and how to get there.
So thinking outside the box, which sometimes we have to do, we did twenty years ago, we had three students that wanted to take Japanese.
Yeah.
At Prosser High School. So we spent nine thousand dollars, put this giant satellite dish down there, it's probably still mounted down, right? I mean, there might be somewhat expertise in the community that could come in and teach the calculus class for one period of time. And that's. Right, so that's.
But if you enter into these ideas, what you need to do is expand your notion of what a job for is. Most of these kids, uh, kids, most of these young adults have no idea what jobs are available. Um, a lot of them never worked before in their life anyway, wouldn't know a job is what. But uh, we need to, we need to initiate that at a very young age.
Yeah, so my first year here, Peggy worked alongside with Debbie Hines and Deanna Flores to do kind of a job in career fair. Um, that's the other one, to, to help students get jobs even when they're in high school, that they can save money to pay for college tuition. So we did have, we did have kind of a job fair for students uh that year. But yeah, trying to teach them these skills uh in our schools and even how to write a resume and how to get a job out of them. Those are big skills, so they're important.
Man, I was wondering, um, if we want to make this available to people, it would be great to have a parent meeting, parent meetings with parents there.
We did, we actually had a big, we got a grant, Deanna Flores wrote a grant, we had a grant and had a huge fair. We had over three hundred kids. We had mainly eighth and ninth grade parents, but it was open to anybody that's, right? We had a fair in, what school was it? Maybe April?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, maybe the end of March, no, probably by April, but doesn't matter. We had families that came and it was a really good, we had all the college and the high school teachers down in the, in the commons. It was a wonderful, and it was a really good learning opportunity for families. Um, but I think there's still more work that can be done with promoting this and getting this out, particularly probably like a sophomore in year.
Yes.
Like, yeah, there's definitely more work we can do, but we have made huge strides in that communication with communities.
When Brian had brought this stuff on the board, maybe a couple of weeks ago, it was, I remember saying one point, we really need to get this out there, our community needs to get this. Whether it be talking to Victoria at the newspaper and doing some articles.
And I think she did do a big write-up on our fair, but yeah, we definitely, that's what we, we really need to see.
Casey, do you remember how?
Yeah.
Casey, do you remember how many, um, what's the percentage? I think Brian said this one time, that the percentage of high school kids that are, have taken at least one college.
It was a couple of years ago, it was like, I don't know, three percent or something. And just this year, the data was, I want to say seventy-three or seventy-four percent. Do you remember? Was seventy-four? Yeah, so seventy-four percent of our students graduate PHS with one or more college credits. So up significantly in the last couple of years.
Yes, and there was, there is a CTE class to explore careers um after school. My daughter took it. She's uh researched five different careers. It's very detailed, um, learned how to write resumes um to the point where it tells you how many jobs are open in Washington every year for those particular careers. So options are there.
We have a new program, my grandkids and Ken have a job chat.
Yeah, they do have a work release, but the students need it like really expensive, they could have a job. And that was, that was part of why some of our enrollments were like seniors, they'd have early, uh, early release or late starts because of their job. Or they would only take cross-skill classes and then.
I mean, no, I miss.
Yeah.
Like my, my grandchild's job chat.
We do, yeah, we do, we have a transitional um program for high school specialized students, but not for general.
They have the health op, health operations class where they do go in the class, but they do see all the rotations in the hospital.
Yeah, in the hospital.
And they'll have a teaching one this year as well.
Do they, do you do that with your kids that ones that you work with?
The athletes? Um, not so much job shadowing. I mean, we can definitely, we have guest speakers come in and talk about different careers um that students may not know about, but we don't do a lot of job shadowing yet. There's always possibility for new things and change and so. But that's a great idea.
Yeah.
That's ideas.
Well, I see. So I apologize for coming in late, but uh, you know, I think this is a, a good discussion to have. Part of the problem is, I, I think we're kind of cancing around the subject a little bit. I think it needs to be more pinpoint focused. I think we can all agree that whether it's, you know, elementary, uh, middle school, high school, then we want the, we want the education experience to be more rigorous, right? So what I think we need to do is evaluate how to get that done, have specific goals set. Figure out what those goals cost and then we can start moving in that right direction, you know? Kind of seems like, I mean, I think these are all good, but it seems like we're floundering a little bit and we just need to be kind of like. The way that brings us right back to around what we, the three of us have discussed about a bit of a long-term plan.
So I don't know, yeah, just wanting, we talked about using this data to help construct this training. With that along with, and there's tons of student data from state assessments. Deanna has CEP data, which is percentile data. Uh, so there are a lot of sources that we can find, say, here are some trends that are running through this data. And then, you know, the other class that is exactly, second exception is that once we decide what programs we want to build, then put resources behind it.
Yeah, it almost kind of seems like it contradicts itself. On one time, we're talking about how the, the rhythm is rolling down and we're not really pushing them. And then we give a full, a whole sheet, where five years ago, we had three classes and now we have.
Yeah, so, so part of that is that you have to backwards plan. So it's not just good enough to have high school level to say, oh, look at, we have all these hard classes. You have to plan backwards with curriculum, with exposure to certain concepts. So then when they get to high school, they can succeed. And then on top of that, uh, to stretch students, say, we're going to put you in the rigorous course, but we're also going to support you. There's after-school tutoring, there's some of these programs, we, you know, we made budget cuts around those my, my first year here. We had like four nights a week, we did after-school tutoring staff with teacher. So yeah, looking at those, not only providing rigorous courses, but how are we going to ensure success for our students? We do that through support. And even, you know, not to harp on, to go back to counseling and student services, there's data there to, to, to pull. And look at kids, uh, GPA their grades, look at their PSAT scores and say, you know what? You've got identified, we're going to support you with Abbott and some of these other classes. Um, we think you can, we think you can take a capital scores. You're demonstrating that, though.
Um, do we regularly as a district look at um other districts, like what they're doing, not just academically, but you know, in their counseling areas? I mean, I used to work in corporate world and help run a business. And that was always, I mean, every week, we knew what our competition was doing, what's working for them, what's not working for them. Um, is that something that you guys do regularly or?
Yeah, in fact, uh, I would say that uh Sunnyside, Sunnyside School District and Sunnyside High School uh has had a turnaround. And they did it, you know, in a lot of different ways, but one of the primary focuses was student services and young stuff, progress monitoring each individual student. Pascal High, the same deal. Pascal High, I think it was nineteen or two thousand, two thousand and five, I think, there was a guy, uh, Johns Hopkins named Bob Belfans. He labeled a lot of districts as dropout factories. Pascal High was one, Grandview High was another. And so they really, Pascal High came up with this model that they divided, you know, they had case loads. And administrators had the council working under, under them and also had kind of a student success coach. But if a student wasn't there, they would pick them up at his home, they would call him on his cell phone and go knock and it's like, you know, like, get out, get dressed, we're taking you to school. So yeah, there, there's counseling programs that uh are good, that we could actually go and visit and model patterns on our work after. But you know, but I don't know. For, for each new idea, there's also um an equal amount of pushback. And so it's not easy to just take somebody and say, now you're going to operate differently, you're going to do this.
Right.
Because they'll say, well, I like what I'm doing. I think it's working. Like, all the data might say something different. So.
I just think that might be a good way to like get some motion going.
Certainly.
Um, if there is success in other places, why not, you know, don't.
Yeah.
Are you working on your districts?
Yeah.
Can, can you guys hear me? This is Deanna.
Yes.
Yes.
Can you guys hear me?
To Sunnyside, because I've taught Sunnyside High School for nineteen years, so I've been there through the entire transition. It does not happen overnight. That is certainly true. It was a ten-year process. But there's a lot of things we do um that are very easy to implement in other districts, they can be here. And many schools, including Pascal, have come to Sunnyside to gather that information. And what could we do to try to help turn things around? So certainly looking at neighboring districts is a great idea. And I would welcome.
And I know I've sat in Ken Casey's office in Grandview more than a couple of times, talking about their tenant's policy and some of the things they do. And it's quite a lot different than ours.
I think it starts with an acknowledgement by the board and administration that we do have a problem, that everything isn't great and that we do need to change course. We can't say things are going, okay, I have no, we need departments, citizens committee, the community members, teachers, board members. But I mean, I think it starts with us saying, we have a problem and we have to make changes.
Yeah.
So just a second ago, somebody was trying to speak up on the Zoom meeting.
And I, and I think too that we care. I, we care a lot.
Absolutely, yes. I'm, I'm still really concerned about the class size of the elementary.
I think that's a, a really good place to start, replacing those teachers, thirty, up to thirty kids in the class. I mean, we all know, there's nothing but data that says small class sizes are the best. Thirty kids in the class, that's two minutes an hour with your teacher. And these are the same grades that are pre-COVID statistics was that three quarters of third graders aren't at reading level. So now we're going to put them in a fourth grade class where they get two minutes an hour with their teacher. If you aren't at reading level in third grade, to catch up is almost impossible. You aren't at reading level in third grade, the correlating statistics were dropping out, you know, in hot. You know, the graduation rate tracks with that. Have three first grade kids not reading in third grade, you're going to have a very low graduation rate down the road. So that's a good place to start.
To have is to have us all come back, but you can't afford that.
I know, I know, I didn't want that. I, I guess, um, you know, and, and not to blame the district, these last two years were difficult for kids, particularly elementary students. And parents trying to teach them. So what do we do? We don't want to get them a large class in the fourth and fifth grade. We just don't or should not.
Andy, can you ask Deanna to try again?
Yeah, if you want to go ahead and try to make a comment again.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, no.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm, I'm in my car driving back from Seattle from Abbott training. Um, this actually goes back to the conversation about the counseling. So there's a, there's a new law and there's new requirement in the state of Washington. A district comprehensive counseling, school counseling plan um that's based on, which is like the na, the national counseling model. And it is going to precipitate some probably um some changes in departmental counselors work with students and how they spend their time. Um, that plan, the, the original like overview is actually already written. Um, and for the board, the board actually has to approve it. It's called a transition, that, the Ask, it's a transition plan. Um, on the agenda yet, just because there's been a lot of other, you know, very meaty topics. But there's been pretty significant changes in how maybe counselors are spending some of their time, how they're doing services. There's direct student services and indirect student services. So we are going to have some significant changes in our. And attached to that, counselors are, well, they're required to do like six-week cycles where data, where they're using data to see if the services they're providing are effective. So there are going to be some changes and that's across the state. Everybody has to do this. So um there'll be more to come on that. Um, and we could have some good conversation around that. I just wanted to let you guys know that is coming. Um, we have to, do have to have it on the agenda, have it approved before school starts. But um I know we were kind of holding off just because there were some other topics that were pretty, pretty meaty. I'm not talking, I'm sorry, I'm not, yeah, I'm done talking. Uh, so that was just one comment on that. So we are definitely going to see some changes in counseling. Um, I don't, I don't know that it will be as much of a change for elementary in how they're currently operate as it will be for secondary. It will be some change for secondary for sure.
So she's talking about the Ask of Raymond, which is that they're a school council association. So they have a research-based uh model for uh secondary counseling. And so it's a, it's a shed on, you know, what counselors. And so it's a it's a shed on, you know, what counselors are capable of. But that was a shift down from most, you know, I'd say this reframe this work. Counselors are doing a lot of faster schedules, scheduling, instead of monitoring student success and having this conversation. So it's a shift back to really guidance counseling and meeting the students and knowing the students. You know, asking them what the barriers are to their education, so.
Can we ask her a clarifying question?
Yeah, she's on there, yeah, she's still there.
Sure. Yes.
Great, so are you referring to the the counselors would work with students for a high school beyond plan? Or is it even more detailed or different than that?
It's a K twelve counseling plan. Um, so it's, it would be the coun- our counselors, our school counselors are counting through the high school, working on the high school. My school and beyond plan actually starts in middle school. Um, well, I've been at Avid with administrators and and quite a few teachers. And that was one of the conversations we were having because high school and beyond plan actually starts in middle school. And making that plan much more meaningful to kids versus a hoop that they have to complete to graduate from high school. Uh, so so it would be both, it would be both, like, our counselors that work with kids for everything, school counselors.
So, yeah, and so it's more, it's more comprehensive. And so the understanding that like when a lot of our middle school students get to high school, they've had years of maybe failure, then passed on. And then within the first couple of weeks of high school, they start failed and they question why they're there in first place. And they even consider dropping. Right, uh, so really trying to start, you know, when we start to see issues, to address those. So it it doesn't just become a high school issue, which often tends to happen, that's what, you know, it happens, this, everything comes through at a high school. And so we don't look down, down the line and say, well, we could have addressed the tier book we did. So now we have a huge, you know, these huge gaps where a student doesn't know kind of requisite skills in order to succeed at high school. As a teacher, remember being a history teacher and I had students reading, I think at like a seventh grade level. And so I was cutting them loose on texts that were sophomore, sophomore, junior level. And I'd get kids who would act out, who'd throw their book and not do it. And the bottom line was they didn't know how to read well. Right, so, and I didn't really even have the skills as a high school teacher to go back and teach them, you know, some of those uh, reading skills that they missed in middle school. So I think that, uh, yeah, it's more more complete model that we're monitoring students, uh, not it's not just a high school beyond.
I think you could find point about needing smaller class sizes and focusing on reading. And you just, you said that, the kids that have behavior problems is because they can't read and all it builds up. I think it's so important and that really established that point, that if we aren't taking care of this as early as possible with small class sizes, giving para support, enrichment programs, more reading specialists. That you just show the problems build and show in so many ways.
Yeah.
It's so important that we address them.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, I think that, uh, I would, I would say the R S work considered. Like there, there's multiple, multiple ingredients that need to be included in order to address it. Some of its curriculum, um, some of its instructional skills and expertise, uh, some of it is support. So some of, some of it is progress monitoring.
Small class size.
Smaller class sizes perhaps. So yeah, that, um, I I think that there are multiple things that go into success. It's it's not a, there is no panacea or like silver bullet, you can just say, this is better. Take care of all of it, so there's a lot of things that go into it, it may be very big. And you can, I mean, you can ask the teachers, right, the complexities that goes into teaching kids and, you know, like at the at the middle school level, they illustrated that. Right, uh, and part of that move was a teacher level push because like the curriculum that we had adopted, we just weren't having a good experience and it wasn't addressing the needs of the students. So really returning to our teachers and saying, let's hear some voices from the community about how we, how we address this.
We had at least six teachers more a few weeks ago, all talking about replacing every time a teacher's position. That was, they all said the same thing and how important that was. So I love that idea, I think we should continue to hear our teachers and take their feedbacks seriously.
Yeah, one of the moves, I don't know. So Fred, in this, it was a collaborative bargaining conversation. There hadn't been class sites, um, you know, like numbers within our collective. So that was one of the moves that we made. Last time we bargained, that it's like enough is enough. We had classes at the high school that they had like fifty kids in and they were just pushing kids in because they were P and then we had discipline issues and things like that, so. We're able to address that at the bargaining table, and I think that that was actually a positive for the district. Say, there's a cap, we can only expect the teachers manage so many students and grade so many essays and things like that, so. That was a small step forward that we just went.
What's the cap in our?
I have to look at the collective bargaining.
And then do we average it or do we stick, I mean, or do we have a cap?
So the state works on average, but uh, we actually distinguish uh, with specialists and yeah, different specialists, different content areas. So like PE, you, uh, it's allowable to have more. Use it, it's allowable that. So there was a difference there between specialists and general, general education.
So what was the class size for first grade classroom?
Like on average in this?
Or or how many actually kids, kids were actually in the classroom?
I don't know, Joey, yeah?
I know.
Twenty eight. And we're losing a fourth grade teacher.
But our our third grade class sizes were set at two.
Okay. So, so how many kids do you think we're going to have in classrooms next year in fourth grade?
I'm going to defer to Craig on that because he knows the numbers and has it. We're anticipating, no, I'm not going to say. Kevin's telling me no.
Is somebody, somebody in the?
Well, how many teachers do you have in, for fourth grade or third?
Third grade.
My Roman for third grade is a hundred and ten.
Yes.
Fourth grade, a hundred and two, fifth grade, a hundred and twenty five.
How many teachers for each? We can all do the math there. For third grade, for currently is six. Fourth grade will have four and fifth grade will have five. One in each of those classes will be dual language.
So how many third grade?
Third grade, I have six, but one of those is, I have five.
So that's.
Yeah.
Hundred and ten divided by six is eighteen.
And fourth and fifth?
And hundred and two, how many did you say? Five fifth grade teachers?
I have five fifth grade teachers, but yes.
So that would be twenty and four. And estimate a hundred and twenty five, probably have six teachers, how many do you have in fifth grade?
Fifth grade's five, but fourth grade was four. That's a hundred and two. But are the dual language classes smaller?
So we're going to have thirty kids in a class in fourth grade?
Thirty, um, I don't, I don't think so, no.
No.
You said four teachers.
I have four teachers.
Hundred and two divided by four.
I don't think it's a straight division though, because how many kids are in the dual language? If there's like twelve in the dual language or fifteen, then we have to add those, it's not like twenty, twenty, twenty.
That's the average, that's the average.
Yeah.
But then there's reality.
Yeah, let's, let's know what it is. We have how many dual language students approximately are in these little frames? About nineteen.
I don't budget it that way, I just.
Yeah. Yeah, I know you have to work with an average. That's what people are talking about, is in the average class, what would those sizes be like? So out of the hundred and two, you're saying, out of, let's say, a third grade, a hundred and six. If we said about nineteen of those are dual language, that would be subtracted from a hundred and six.
Correct.
But I think.
Yes, divided by one less teacher. So any other exceptional comments?
I, you know, I've been at the same training as Kevin and Michael and Joey and bunch all week, so I got my own pride about it. But just as I leave, I wanted to just, um, at at the end of the last board meeting, there was some very good discussion about revisiting and refocusing on the budget cuts that are or aren't going to happen and be creative with how we can lessen the deficit and the money aspect, and I would hope that the board would really look at exploring some options, so we can keep Kevin Musks as our athletic director. We can keep our class sizes in check, we can offer services for kids and help our district continue to improve and grow. I think that just needs to be considered and I appreciate the, the, at the end of the last board meeting, that discussion was heading in that direction and I hope that continues.
All right, Craig, you're up.
Here we go. Becky, are you on there? She's my trusted assistant that's going to share the screen, so very, I apologize, we finished this presentation up about four to six.
Are there handouts for the community members that are here?
I don't have them.
Sure.
Can you make that bigger?
There's a coffee machine right down there.
Let the twelve year old study what the news is. Becky, make that bigger so Mark will see it. Oh, there you go. So. Just starting conversation on the budget for twenty two, twenty three. This is a draft, I just want to just reiterate quickly that there are five separate funds. And if we have time, we'll talk about the funds other than the general fund, those are pretty short conversations, but I think for our purposes tonight, we should really focus on the, on the general fund. Just to remind the board that the budget needs to be adopted by August 31st. And during that adoption meeting, there will be a formal public hearing, which is a lot more of the same conversation about the public. Not that I don't think there's been a lot of public questions tonight, but typically that is the purpose of that public hearing, to invite questions from the public at that time.
And when will that public hearing be?
Excuse me, Marcy, Marcy Mercer just posted, she'd really appreciate it if everybody could speak up because it's hard for them to hear.
Marcy, hear me, am I loud enough?
Marcy?
It's not, Marcy?
Marcy is sure her answer is left a little bit.
Okay. So this is kind of the, this is our, there we go, thank you. So we're going to talk about the general fund. Talked about the class sizes last week and how the funding point of this. I do just want to point out, we do have challenges, as we just got in, spent an hour talking about the enrollment continues to decline, there was a slide in here that we showed in a minute of the history since the two thousand nine, two thousand and ten school year. We are, we are increased in staffing as far as dollar wise and probably units also. The one thing that we, I wanted to try and have today, but this is my problem, but just tell a little scenario of what happens. We do the budget in our own system, then we export it over to the state's financial system. And then we import it. And sometimes not all the data comes over and not all the data came over, so. I don't really have, you know, like total teachers and how much more they are than staffing, I know that, that's going to be part of the conversation, but. Um, as far as certificate staffing, there were thirteen resignations and retirements. And I also want to say, this budget right now, again, is is a draft, it's not the final. It had, it shows the deficit right now. And, but there's thirteen resignations, six positions in the budget right now are not being filled. A kindergarten or KRB, fourth and fifth grade, uh, teachers that we talked about at Heights. There's English, language arts, and a science teacher at the middle school and one BLA at the high school. So those positions are not in the budget right now, as well as um, the full-time athletic director and the high school counseling is not in the budget. The, there are two positions that were added and those will be funded out of categorical programs, not special ed. We've talked about this before, special ed has certain requirements, but the categorical programs fund themselves, they pay for themselves, and there are some staffing that we can charge to to the categorical programs. And those two positions are are added and paid out of categorical. So the the first thing, and this really is what drives, and this is, this is obviously the biggest challenge as a a budget person, Becky, do the slide on the enrollment history through with please. Um, I know it's really small, but I just want to point out the great, the the great vertical bars. That's the total enrollment. So you can see, you know, they go down mostly down, but then the colored lines are the actual buildings, so it's a, it's not too confusing, that we wanted to give a grand total, which is the the gray bars there, so. We started out, and again, these are, these are year-to-date averages. And so the state funds us based, based upon the first school day of the year of the month, I should say, except for September is anomaly, that's the fourth school day in September. About the other months, it's the first school day of the month. It's over a ten-year running average, and that's what these numbers are, these are the average. So for two thousand nine, two thousand and ten, twenty eight fifty four was our year-to-date full-time equivalent for students. Now, as we talked about, some students have partial scheduled running start. Try to have the other, other type of of uh, programs, but we only can count the equivalent of a of a full-time student. We do actually, actually have a number of full-time running start students, but they're not in our account. So twenty eight fifty four, and if you want to look at the bad news, the year we just finished, twenty one, twenty two, we're over there on the right-hand side, twenty three and six is where we ended up. And I do want to put an asterisk by that number because this is the first year that we've had virtual or online students. And we averaged for the year twenty eighth. And that's really a pass-through, we have, we get to count those students, but then you know, at Graduation Alliance that we talked about, or there's another one. But we actually count those students for our enrollment purposes, but then we pass through, you know, like ninety three percent of the money that we receive from the state for those benefits. enrollment's really almost inflated, so to speak, that's why I put every month I give the board the enrollment out, those students in, but as far as budgeting and stuff, those students are, are in. Now, the challenge is that, again, enrollment is not a perfect science. What I have done is look, and I've actually done this for a long, long time, is, is look at. a student that maybe, let's say, is a second grader this year, how many of those second graders have actually been third graders, right? Just, just that difference. And it's, it's interesting, I, I was plotting these differences on a five-year running average, and it's, it's interesting that that K R B, and again, this is way out of the weeds, um, into the weeds, if you don't really understand, but first grade, for five, the fifth year, I'll just give you a, a sample, just for example, the fifth year is ninety-seven percent. So those kindergartners, with the five-year average, only ninety-seven percent have remained as second graders. Four years, ninety-six. Three years, ninety-three. Two years, ninety-one. Then it's interestingly that it was a hundred percent, um, or just last year. That's interesting, but, so.
Can you, could you narrow those kids to a heartbreak, as you say, these kids are fading, but secondarily?
As far as names?
Yes.
We probably could, but I.
Because that, that, that holds a, that holds a, it's a tangent on the, uh.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what, I'm just doing things, total kids in the news. Survive, so to speak, okay? Coherent survival. Now, the other thing I looked at was, what were the actual student count for June twenty-twenty-two only? Now, as you know, in our history of looking at the enrollment, sometimes it starts, starts pretty high as far as September and October, and then by the end of June, it's a, it's a pretty good lower number. So at the end of June, we had twenty-three fifty-one full-time students. And the other thing I do is, then I say, okay, well, those students, I'm gonna roll them forward without any deduction. So you take out the seniors, and then you add in the new incoming kindergartners. So, you know, kindergarten now goes to first, first goes to second, and on down the road, of course, the seniors have graduated, and we start with, with new kindergarten, so that number is twenty-three hundred and fourteen. So we've had, you know, the difference between twenty-three fifty-one was at twenty-seven, lower. So, so a hundred and eighty-eight, um, twelfth graders as of June, but we had, let's see, a hundred and a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty-one kindergartners is what I, no, a hundred and a hundred and fifty-one kindergarten.
Just let me get it.
Is what I, or if they roll forward.
Or this, oh, you didn't count.
But I mean, projected, because you estimate the kindergarten.
Hundred and fifty-one?
Hundred and fifty-one.
That's based on who registered?
So we have, what? I think the last count that I heard, we had eighty-seven. So here's the, here's the count, a hundred and fifteen at, at the K R B and thirty-six at Woodstrand, what I have for kindergarten. And, and you're probably gonna give me a look, but that's way too many, aren't you? Okay, good. So at River View, we had eighty-seven so far registered. But, you know, the history is twenty, twenty-five, so that's what I worry about. I mean, I worry about all the enrollment, obviously, but but a hundred and fifteen, um, is what, is what I'm gonna say is gonna come forward. So the twenty-three fifty-one, and then using the other percentages, what's interesting is that, um, the middle school is pretty close in sixth graders coming forward, so the fifth graders coming forward. For four out of five years, you're right at a hundred percent. Um, high school for ninth graders, so this is a trick question for you. Why would high school ninth graders be more than the seventh grade, than the, um, eighth graders that we, that we're rolling forward? It's Patterson, right? So, so high school has, you know, a hundred and six to a hundred and five is their average. Roll forward, but there's more because of Patterson. But then it gets pretty dramatic. Uh, the big hit is in eleventh grade. I mean, so the tenth graders that become eleventh graders, they're in the eighties, eighty-five percent over each, again, five years worth of averages. Um, so that's where we really lose, um, those.
You're losing them with running starters, that's when they're fair.
And then ninety, ninety-four to ninety-six, um, twelfth graders.
Craig, what do you get, um, F T E wise for students that are in TRITAP? Because that's not a total wish, like running starters. You, they.
TRITAP, again, we get to count the full-time, so say that a kid goes to TRITAP half-time, and he's half-time in, in the, then we would count the half.
Okay.
Is all we would get.
That's included in these numbers.
Yes. So, again, these are full-time equivalent, equivalencies, it's sixteen hundred minutes a week, sixteen sixty-five a week is what a full-time student actually is.
C T E funding is a little bit different. So like TRITAP, we're partners in that, and we, we bought shares into it. And so there's other districts that buy shares into it as well, but, um, a lot of that's with C T E funding.
When did we buy shares into it?
It was when State Ballot came on. Yeah, we only had, yeah.
Because we didn't use the house.
No, so yeah, we're, uh, we're partners in that. It, it's almost like a co-op.
But having said all that, enrollment is, is, is really what drives the numbers, and begin with, uh, with June, focusing on June with twenty-three hundred and fourteen, and then looking at these various percentages, I'm estimating twenty-two eighty-six as far as next year. Now, the other pressures, you know, there's, um, church that's gonna have offer a new school, right, a private school, so that could take some of our students out. The challenge with, with enrollment is if you, if you're too high, you staff too high, and it's pretty difficult to get that money back. But on the other hand, if you staff too low, and then students come, then the summer's already been through and trying to hire new teachers, so that's, that's really the, the challenge, um, that, that we have. But that, that's what I've estimated for right now, the twenty-two eighty-six, and you can barely see the, the buildings there. Three fifty-five for River View. Two twenty-four for Woodstrand, three thirty-seven Heights, five sixty-three middle school, and three oh seven for high school. Again, I appreciate the conversation. We can get kids back in our district in some way. That, that is really the the silver lining, so to speak. That's the unwritten, that's the that's the So, then I wanted to give, the next slide is, is give some information for you about where our general fund is since two thousand seventeen, eighteen. And I can go back, you know, as long as we need to or want to, but I typically just done four years plus, you know, the twenty-one, twenty-two budget, and then compare that to the twenty-two, twenty-three. Everybody wants to look at the fund balance or the savings account, the cash reserves. You noticed it in seventeen, eighteen, it increased to eighty-nine thousand for the year. Then a couple of years of, of some deficit spending. And then COVID saved us, if you wanna say it like that, um, nine billion amounts went up during COVID, when we had, you know, looked at as far as on budget, the paper, to lose money in twenty-twenty-one, so. And we saved a lot of money, uh, the federal government had nicer grants that we spent some money on, we didn't have substitutes, and there's a lot utilities, those kind of things that, that helped contribute to to that savings. And then twenty-one, twenty-two, um, estimated one point six million overspending. As I spoke about last week, uh, we have received about a million dollars of enrollment stabilization and levy equalization funding. So my estimate is that we're, um, gonna spend about six hundred thousand of that deficit, and our fund balance will go down, about that six hundred thousand. So, estimated at four point eight, you'll see on the, the top right-hand column there, four point eight is, is our starting, um, fund balance. And I talked about this also, that there are categorical programs that we, that are included in that money, but mostly that they're the state programs. There's, there's really three state programs that we receive an allocation from the state of Washington. We receive that over the year, but if we don't spend all of that money, we get to carry a certain portion of that forward, and yet it's reserved, it's spoken for, it's, you can't spend it except on those programs. So, for the first time, um, this year, I, I've estimated, um, in the budget, those carryover amounts. Now, what the board does when, when they pass a resolution to adopt the budget, they, they say, the district, you can only spend, um, let's, let's just say that, if this was the actual budget that was adopted, district, you can spend forty-six million, nine fifty-five. That's what the resolution would say. That's the, uh, no, that's the revenue. Expenses, sorry, forty-seven million, that's the, that's the expense amount that we can only go up to. Now, let's say we get two million-dollar grant or something. Well, that number is still fixed, so the board would have to go back to another public hearing to actually extend the budget to give authorization to spend more if we had a two-million-dollar grant. So I have typically built in, um, a grant reserve of six hundred and fifty thousand in revenue and expenses, just to have some wiggle room for some grants, you know, um, that we received during the year that's not in the budget, so. That, well, it's not, not a specific item. It's, it's under, um, state, uh, let's see here. But, um, this, this, you'll see in a minute there that, yeah, these programs are just broad programs, and I actually have, you'll have details. So that, that's just, so I've estimated reserves of sixty thousand dollars for the learning assistance program. We also have a high poverty, twenty-four thousand. Career technical ed, seventy-five thousand. And then food service, um, we always have a minimum forty-two a year, and there's some times that we buy things in the month of August that really is for the next year, or we need to order, and so that's prepaid. It's not an expense until the next year, because that's the year that it is along with. So I have a hundred thousand, uh, in there for reserve for food service and food delivery products. So that's just, you know, the, the general categories. We'll notice here, regular instruction. That includes, that, that's really the basic education side of the equation. That includes that's your curriculum. That includes anything with a school designation. Oh, one, and there's also, we have a dropout re-engagement program and an alternative learning experience with some of these, you know, other vendors that we pay, or we can count those students, but those are all included in, in basic ed. Now, this next sheet, I apologize for how small the print is. But this is, this is the magic to balance the budget, to, um, balance the categorical programs. The support, so the way this is organized is, again, this is the state of Washington gives all these different programs a number. That's the left-hand side is the program number, this kind of drives, program description, and then we break it down as far as expenses into salaries. Mark, do you know what M S O T stands for? Materials, supplies, and operating costs. You did good. So basically, it's the non, non-employee stuff, right? Supplies, travel, all that stuff, non-supply, non, non-salaries, I mean, for revenues have the total. So if you follow total expenses all the way down the bottom, forty-seven million, three thirty-four would be, if the budget were adopted, that's, that's what the number would be. Then, to the right-hand column of those are total revenues. Now, next to that is indirect amount, there's a rate, and there's an indirect amount. Indirects are like overhead. There, there are charges for like, you know, business office. Um, we, we can charge various types of indirects. Mostly attributable to grants. So just for example, um, I don't wanna put that on C T E, because they'll say, holy cow, they're giving, they're giving way too much money. So let's look at, uh, like LAP, let's look at fifty-five hundred on the left-hand side. It says LAP State. So the expenditure is one million, hundred nineteen, four, nine. Yet the revenue is one point one six seven. But we're allowed almost forty-eight thousand dollars of indirects. So another indirects in my mind is, is basically revenue, because you can, you offset your expenses with, with those indirects. So that's, that's really important. I always try and, uh, take as much indirects as we can, because that's what helps offset some of these deficits. Now, if you go to the top, we have basic ed, program oh-one, and right next to that is program ninety-seven, district-wide support. Now, that's gonna be comprised of, um, the district office, the school board, superintendent's office, maintenance and grounds, you know, technology, all, all those kind of support-type services are under that, um, description. And then.
Would you cut air conditioning out for the board meetings, save money in the budget? It's not working. The high school is having air conditioning issues. Brian had someone out earlier to look at it.
I'll talk faster and less, so. So, last district-wide support, we'll notice that following the former right-hand column, we're deficit four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six twenty-seven. So that's basic ed and district-wide support. We're in the whole four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. The other programs that that are really, I don't wanna say problematic, but that that take fund balance away, with the special ed, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand. Looking at the far right-hand column, and all these little pluses and minuses, those are the grants that that, uh, can take the indirects and just pennies of the difference. Food service, two ninety-eight. Transportation, three eighty-two. So if this, the budget was adopted, we'd be one point four million over, but then, as I said. over, but then, as I said, those indirects, we could add those back to the bottom line. And so a billion seventy, those indirects and our expenses are three hundred seventy nine thousand, three ninety three over the revenues. This is the first draft, okay? From top down during the year, we both look at the levy passing and then with the levy not passing, we have a number of of further reductions that were in that plan, so to speak. Just want to point out, I'm just starting the discussion. This is a board discussion, if you want to add positions back, if you want to balance budget, you know, make three hundred seventy nine thousand dollars worth of reductions.
With all the proposed cuts, changes, everything to date, even with that, we're still on four hundred thousand.
Okay, the only positions.
But not not cut necessarily.
Yeah, positions that are not are those, the ones that I referred to the director, secretary.
Balance budget, really, we didn't probably do more, you know, we talked about classified positions and for those any cut. This is also early graph, as Craig has said. And so, you know, there there are line items there that the board can either, you know, like express, you know, cost reductions. So there's still, there's still work, there's still work to get to a balanced budget. We were discussing this with President with the earlier weeks, that there will still be some cuts.
I'll just point out that inflation, I mean, the cost of, especially like in food service, it's gone through the roof, my budget was way too low this year, so I tried to jack it up enough for next year. So that, of course, increases from food service. And transportation, this year had like, had a one time influx of money from the legislature. And now to say, well, for twenty two, twenty three, we went back to to what it normally has been. So so some some pretty big dollar amounts, obviously fuel, right? For for transportation and, you know, six bucks a gallon for diesel or whatever, I mean. I wanted to be realistic and increase those those line items.
Has he heard anything from the state on if if there's going to be an increase in their transportation budget because of the fuel? Are they going to?
I have not heard.
May interrupt your progress.
No, I'm I'm just gonna say that that's pretty much done with the general part of the conversation.
Question, looking back at the spreadsheet. Prior to this one?
Yes.
Yes. Explain, you know, if you go back to seventeen eighteen to eighteen nineteen, you roughly went up, to the safe and map, two million dollars.
You're looking at the expenditures?
Correct.
Okay.
And then again, in to nineteen twenty, it's, you know, roughly a million dollars. But all of a sudden, we see a large increase from twenty twenty one to twenty one, twenty two of about five million dollars and another five million dollars again. This budget cycle, and I I can see where it's coming from, but you could kind of elaborate.
Of course, the big, the recent increase, at least for twenty one, twenty two, is that federal stimulus, the one point eight, right?
And that was the stimulus.
So that's the S R, S R. And we have budget S R two also in that year. And again, for twenty two, twenty three is there were three different allocations. It's finished up spending in twenty two. S R two, we're spending that in twenty one, twenty two, and there will still be, it's not all of them spent. We estimated, we're carrying forward some eight hundred thousand. Is the number, eight hundred sixteen thousand. Two, seven hundred thousand. And then S R three, there are, there are two different allocations for S R three. One is three point nine million, and that's what we're saying is going to be for Woodstrand. And then the other S R three, learning loss, roughly, is going to be, at least talked about, is having our textbook adoption. So so there is, you know, almost four million worth of increases from twenty one, twenty two to twenty two, twenty three, and then, of course, the state, you know, passes through some, some price equator, right, allocation, so salaries and bargaining needs and that kind of stuff.
Craig, can we get you to hold just a second? We're gonna move the speaker closer to you guys. They're gonna lose audio. Yes. The A C is on now.
Jason, I I do have the revenue side of that.
I don't think I have actually what the, Jason, I don't actually have what's the budget side, at least with me tonight, of the twenty one, twenty two budget as far as what the specifics, which I I can give to you. I mean, I'm sure you're looking at like, you know, support services went up a million dollars. Regular instruction went up, you know, at one point. Two, those special ed went up. Those, those are big numbers. Again, budget wise, but it's also, remember that I'm estimating we're gonna spend a bit of a million dollars. I don't want to say less because our revenues are probably going to go up a bit of dollars. So net down a million, right, of of that one point six, if that makes sense. But I can, I think, yeah, that's a, that's a legitimate question as to why the the big jump from twenty twenty one to twenty one, twenty two. And of course, you know, decrease of regular instruction in twenty two, twenty three because of the number of staff that's not. And then, of course, the increase in support services is going to be, let me just point out, support services, that's it's on this sheet for district wide support for the ninety seven, but in this specific line item, you need to add to that food service and transportation. So again, it's the state's kind of screwing how they account for things, but these are just broad categories. But if you added the five point nine million district wide supporters expenses on this this big sheet, and then the three eighty two for food service and two ninety eight for transportation, that should equal the nine.
Wasn't eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, wasn't that during that time when we were buying that?
Yeah, one of those years was, I can't remember.
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry. I was asking him that that eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, when we had that big jump in our big deficit increase in the deficit was when we were buying up.
Yes, if Deanna's still on, she would remember that year.
I'm here, sorry, I'm just trying to get logged back in, so I probably missed some of it because I switched to my computer.
What year were you the acting superintendent?
I think it was eighteen, nineteen, it was five years ago.
Eighteen, nineteen?
Yeah. I think.
I mean, I I helped, but you did most of the work.
Seventeen, eighteen, maybe it was. It's a blur.
But yeah, this, I guess, I just want to point out, there's still, you know, line by line to look at and June just finished, and so we should have the June financials pretty close to to see where we are. I will point out that June is the lowest apportionment percentage, we'd be like six percent. So don't be surprised to see a big, you know, over a million dollar deficit for the month of June just by itself. But then July, we get, and if it's twelve percent in July, or if it's ten percent in July, and twelve and a half percent in August, so that number will will go back up, but. That's, I don't know if you want to, any other general fund questions for starters? Or if you want me to hurry and go through these other funds, let me kind of digest this?
And to be, just to clarify, another question, looking at twenty one, hundred and twenty one, ten, special ed state, special ed state.
Yes. Yeah.
Does the revenue go straight across?
Yeah, so the the sum of the like seven hundred eighty thousand, the two point nine.
One thirty.
That equals the three point eight. Now, I do want to point out, and and I thought about this as as I was doing this, if you go down a little bit more, there there are some actual federal special ed programs, twenty three, twenty three, ten, twenty four, twenty four, ten. I mean, all all we get out of those is a little bit of indirects, but I'm thinking that maybe we should just include all those up under special ed, just as a I mean, you'll see like, you know, twenty three, we get thirty five hundred dollars, you know, twenty one thousand, so it's 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 pretty minimal, but wanted to look at all the special ed programs together, then, and we probably should put them up up there at the top there.
The map and roughly four hundred short, if I'm reading this right, especially like federal would cover, it covers that. It's five hundred thousand, unless I'm looking at it, unless it's.
Well, that that's, but see, we, that's a grant.
Okay.
So we get five hundred twenty one thousand is what we get, but we spend five hundred. So we we get twenty one thousand worth of indirects, if you got the column along there. Yeah, so so all those monies are spoken for, a lot of those federal ones, we we staff with with Paris. The teachers are out of the the state, the state program. You had enough? You going? All right, let's be quick, I promise. So thank you, Capital Projects, I'll make this short, Capital Projects. So for the, oh, man. Thank you, I missed a column. Uh, it's not gonna help. We're gonna have to go back to the email I sent this afternoon that had started from seventeen, eighteen, and then it went through twenty two, twenty three. But I'll just tell you what it says, because I did it. It's got sixteen, it's got thirteen, five for Woodstrand. It's got two thousand, again, estimated little carryover money for heights and a thousand and a million dollars for you know, that's the three year forecast, but that'll be the same thing. Do you have, you have the twenty two, the the comparative one? You know, like I said, it's got sixteen, sixteen million, five hundred is the estimated. There you go. So we've got beginning fund balance. Assuming we get all the match, state match this year, and Dan says, well, you know, let's just, again, for capacity purposes, not say that we finished all of the Woodstrand, we'll budgeted next year along with a million dollars for I think it's heights and two million for K R V, or might be vice versa of those things. But that's, so if the board adopted the budget, the authorization would be sixteen million, five hundred. And then, again, we we do get some rent, that's really not part of the construction process, but just just keep a little bit of fund balance in there. But we're pretty much assuming to spend it all out, the construction.
Craig, on the revenues, the investment earnings, that's the
That's just turning. Yeah, yeah, look, I mean, look at the difference, how it's gone, nine eighty five. And we had sixty nine million in the bank, you know, million four, nine twenty four, two thirty nine. Now, this one, I estimate, you know, fifty eight thousand. And then, you know, interest rates are pretty pathetic, it's in point eight percent.
That was interest on capital fund money.
Yeah. And that's, of course, was part of the expenditures, you know, helped offset some of our local bond investment earnings on that.
So on a rental income for the pasture, that's the property at O I E?
Yes.
What's the value of that property?
Well, it depends if we sell it as one parcel or two, and
I don't know if we want to discuss the.
Figure out, is it worth more to sell it if we're getting?
Right.
Twelve thousand, five hundred dollars, that's per year.
Yep.
Not for a month.
Nope.
On it, yeah.
I think silage, a few cavillins from water.
Yeah.
It's not much.
And I can't remember, I could look, but I think there's maybe, and again, we have an opt out if we want to give sixty days, I can have the notice.
For twelve thousand, five hundred dollars, that's a cheap buyout to sell.
Well, I'm saying if we opt out, we we say we're, you're done, and then we we can sell.
The only option is, I mean, land is through the gruff at this point. And it's getting harder and harder to find, that's I think, you know, and these discussions are part of our long term facilities plan. In my mind, that, you know, we don't know what we're gonna need in five, or ten, or twenty, thirty years from now. You give up a piece of land, you never get it back, and you paid three times as much for it.
The issue with that land, and I live about a half a mile south of it, is that it is bedrock.
We're sitting on bedrock too, and all the stuff that.
Yeah, bedrock is sitting about that far above the ground.
Yeah.
And the water table is about six inches above that. And I don't know how you would ever put a sewer out there or septic system. The danger of vehicles on those two roads that cross there, Missomer and O I E. O I E is sixteen miles long. And I've seen people, I've chased people when I was a cop, driving over a hundred miles an hour on that road. The dangers are immense.
The city would have to rezonate and put schools on speed limits and things like that. I mean, I I think they would change, if we're ever to develop, but the whole infrastructure would change. But it's changing out there anyway, there's new developments going in.
But that's further in.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, we don't, we truly don't know. I mean, they're estimating that the town across will grow. And they're, they have all sorts of new developments going in, so. And there, they have all sorts of new developments going in, so, uh, yeah. I would hate to be in the position that, like, uh, ten years from now, somebody looks back and says, that super, well, they'll say that anyways. Like, who helped make that decision?
You'll see that, we're new seller.
There you go, that's what I was getting at.
Well, the, the part of, I was part of the Prosser leadership, um, this past year, and part of it was, we, we listened to some presentations from the city, and the expected growth over time. And if you follow the water and sewer, that's gonna tell you where the growth is going. And as developments go, the next developer comes in, and I'd hate to see that we went from, right now, we have two lots that we took itself, to potentially a whole bunch of lots.
Well, to play devil's advocate on this, when we did the last lease, you never did tell us how substantially more, but there was one that came in a day late. For the rules of the lease, uh, it was substantially more than the twelve-five we're getting, but it was, as I said, a day late, so, next go around, that twelve-five may quadruple, or, I don't know.
I mean, I, I think the appraisal was low, but I don't, you know, I'm not a professional appraiser.
But it appraised out.
Again. So that's Capital Projects, we're just finishing out the, and the next time we have a meeting, there'll be a three-year projection forecast, I actually have it done, but we won't spend that time right now. The next, uh, fund is the debt service fund number thirty, that pays principal and interest on, on the bond, the big capital bond. And then we've also had, uh, some transportation bonds to buy buses. And, uh, back in two thousand eighteen is when we also bought a, a number of district vehicles. You can see those payments, um, down towards the bottom, non-voted debt. The, uh, it's called a limited general obligation bond, in two thousand sixteen was paid off this school year, so no, no debt payments for the twenty-two, twenty-three. The vehicles were still making a payment next school year, but that's the last one. That's why the rate's different than the other, the other payments of fifty-seven, nine. The vehicles purchased in two thousand eighteen, uh, sixty-one thousand eight hundred. And then, again, the buses purchased in two thousand nineteen, another payment of fifty thousand three twenty-three. Those payments come, the, the revenue comes as a transfer from the transportation vehicle fund to the debt service. So debt service makes the payment, but that's the revenue source. And then you'll see the actual budget for the, the construction bond, you know, four point three million, um, you know, debt, uh, interest and principal for next school year. So that one's pretty straightforward.
I have a question.
Yeah.
There, there, by, uh, we purchased a, a number of vehicles in eighteen.
Yep. Yep.
So I know we have a relatively new fleet, do we have a vehicle replacement plan, I know we have one for buses, do we have it for district vehicles?
We do not.
Buses are based upon appreciation, so, uh, that's part of the.
We have, we have to.
Yeah.
Budget that.
Yeah, um, I think, uh, our strategy's been to drive them, yeah, yeah, and, and then try and repair them, and keep driving them.
And the coaches refuse to ride the heavy van. Sat out there for a while. After, like, it wasn't that bad. You know, I think that's another part of our overall scope of work, was to come up, just, I mean, it's easier to buy one or two versus ten. Um, you know, in a cycle.
Trying to think, um, I think it was four hundred eighty-seven thousand is what I think.
And it's an easier to swallow when it's forty thousand, fifty, well, they're probably eighty now, but, you know.
Yeah, it, um, it kind of goes back to that same thing we talked about with teachers and curriculum. As far as the district ensuring and making a commitment towards its employees, saying, we will do everything that you need to do your job, right? It may not be extravagant, I mean, it may not be top of the line pickup, but it's, it's a pickup that drives well, that you're not gonna have to worry about breaking down, or it's gonna be in the repair shop. So, yeah.
The next, uh, fund is the associated student body fund. It was from forty, these budgets we got from middle school and high school and, and the elementary schools. Just want to point out that we typically have a very high capacity, you know, budget-wise, and but not really spend or receive as much, it's pretty aggressive, if you want to call it that. But I just noticed that, you know, fund balance, um, is estimated to go up compared to the twenty-one, twenty-two, a little bit. Again, athletics, um, cultural, athletics, recreational, or social is what ASB can, can be spent for. We have.
What's the nature of private monies?
Private monies is like, um, donations for charitable purposes. It's interesting to me that typically they should pretty much go back and forth the same, right? The money, but there's always probably some timing differences, but it's for charitable, charitable purposes, ASB can have fundraisers for charity, yeah.
Um, with athletics, why, why is the athletics revenue even to go up two thousand?
Two hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm gonna say, I, they have a very.
And this is the, this is my dream space. Right, so what, what are we gonna do this, it's so awesome, that's gonna get an extra two hundred.
We didn't, families.
Yeah, that's a question every two, because when I look at actual versus the budget, the budget's way higher, revenue and expenses than, than what the actual shows.
Capacity, um, just kind of like you mentioned earlier, in case we get a donation, we have to be able to build it in there.
That's always a good question, it's like, what the heck?
But, I mean, I can find the high school within everything, the sports, the clubs, and everything, I think. Order of millions of.
Is that kids, is that what you're talking about, ticket sales?
Everything.
Or what else is?
At least fifty-six.
Of course, F, remember, FFAs in here, right?
Yeah.
So, clubs and all those things are in there. Uh, last one is the vehicle fund, used just to purchase buses. And we have, um, a purchase order to buy one bus this year. You look at the twenty-one, twenty-two, your estimate, um, the hundred and seventy-five thousand, um, is the purchase order for that bus. That should come in August, and if you look at the revenue, the two fifty-eight, bus depreciation, or state depreciation, that also only comes in August thirty-first, we get paid one time from the state. So we need to time it with the purchase of the bus, or we, you know, won't have enough money to make the payment, so in the past, we, we've, um, paid cash for some buses, but now you can see that, or, you know, since sixteen, eighteen, and nineteen, we've, incurred some debt. Amy, I think, presented to the board, uh, wants to buy, I think it's three buses for next school year.
We had already put the order in, because I said they gave it to us.
Right, that, this year's rate, so that's the, that's the four hundred ninety-four thousand. But we're not gonna have enough money to do that, so I've got a loan in there, two thousand twenty-three, that LGO bond, two thousand twenty-three, three hundred twenty-five thousand.
Was it three grand or two?
I thought it was three.
Was it three?
It's three, three in twenty-two, twenty-three, and then two in twenty-three, twenty-four. So total five, I believe. And, um, that three twenty-five, I would say would come in, you know, like, next August, would, um, we wouldn't make a payment until the year from September. I'd do like the two and a half percent interest rate, I mean, for, for these bonds, it's current rates right now, like, you know, one point three, one point four, so, just to be conservative, I made it all work with the cash flow and, and, uh,
It's a loan through the state treasury.
Out, either way, um, we haven't ever gone through them, we've always gone through, like, cashmere bank, who's given us a fairly low rate. Again, this is a bond, so we have to get our bond counsel to, to write the resolution and go through all that, it's not really easy to get debt. Kind of go through the bond process, but that was, that's kind of the, the thought process there, and of course, the payment would be, you know, like, September one of twenty five, I think, so. Yeah.
Um, because when you started, you said that ASB, uh, yeah, athletic director was not in the budget, because our position's not being included, so.
Athletic directors not in the ASB.
Right. Um, so where's that gonna come, or how's that gonna work, who's gonna? I mean, we don't have the ASB athletic director, we don't have a line item for that, we're not renewing a lot of positions that are, have been retired, or moved on, or whatever, where does that fit? I don't understand, where, where's that gonna fit, because somebody has to manage this budget, they just over. Who's gonna do that?
Yeah, so we never said that we weren't gonna staff it. How we're gonna staff it is still a discussion. So, like, the, I think the general public has assumed, right, that, like, oh, you're not gonna replace that position. That's not ever been kind of the plan, was to reduce and then recraft it. But I don't think we assumed, we've never been told.
No.
And, and we just talked at the very start of this about the student, student support services being so important with Pasco and Sunny Side. Yet, that's where we're cutting from, and I don't know, Craig, maybe you can help, it seems like we're pretty lean, but like, we are cutting, 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 but it's the revenue aspect that we're missing out on. For instance, Saint Side Christian, that's seven thousand dollars out of my pockets, not a taxpayer. So if I leave, they have no way of replenishing that money, they're on the phone talking to me, asking, where are you going, where is your money? We only have two hundred and some odd that left, why aren't we on the phone with them? That should be money for us, that, that we're treasuring, that we're holding on to.
That's part of the whole conversation, if we're, you know, if our net is a hundred and seven out, we get, not, you know, just on the, the basic gets side, but then there's, we also get an allocation for the materials and stuff for, for students, so it's probably about ten grand, you know, roughly, I mean, easy to do the math on that, million dollars, you know, or more. That's, that's out.
But if, if Sunny Side Christian starts cutting, I'm wondering, why am I sending my kid there, I have to go look elsewhere. If Prosser cuts, why are people gonna send their kids here when they can go elsewhere?
I don't disagree with what you're saying, we've, we've not filled positions, and we're still four hundred thousand dollars less revenue than expenses, you know, we might, and, uh, Erica did a great job bringing all those people together, together, gather the data to say why, right? But are you gonna get a hundred and seven of those back? No, I, there's some at Hanford that are gonna be there, and they're gonna graduate, there's some in, you know, Kennewak, or Myken, or wherever else. So he's like, Christian, and you, you're not gonna get those kids back, right? So we're four hundred thousand down, I don't, you know, we need a plan to go forward.
Right, but.
Um, but it's drafting the budget to where we can start end goals to, to, to align our dollars, to push it into that direction, so we're not just shotgun approaching it, you know, we're actually clear and concise, because that's, that's gonna be where you start making a big difference, at least in my.
I absolutely fair, I think the discussion is on the avenue, because when you cut services or titles of students, that hits home, and so I feel like when you're cutting athletic director, and we have no idea how these programs are gonna operate without, that's gonna directly impact students when they go home, or a fourth grade teacher when the class is overwhelmed with thirty-plus kids, those families are gonna come home and start speaking about, what are alternatives for us? And, and, because you're absolutely right, I, we have two at Saint Side Christian, there's a number of Prosser kids each month, we get the newsletter, new enrollment, you know, my son has three kids in his class just from Prosser this year. That's three individuals that should be here at Prosser.
Did your children start there?
They did, with the intention to come to Prosser in high school, but I think that goes back to our discussions of, of curriculum. They'll be advanced enough to where, can we send them to this high school, and they'll still be successful? Because there's a lot of things that Prosser offers that Saint Side Christian can't, and we're, we're well aware of them. So it's that fine balance of, as a parent, how do we meet those needs for our children?
When, when can we expect to know what's gonna happen with the athletic director, because the big meeting that we had, it was very unclear. I, I understand it takes a little bit of time, but it is very unsettling for the whole community to have a major position, it's not just, uh, it's an administrator at the high school too, like, that's a third leg here for the high school, for so many things. Um, what's timeline, will it be public, we expect it to be publicly shared, beyond just a school board meeting, like, on Facebook, something like that, it's very easy to do. What's the timeline?
I don't know that we're ready to commit to a timeline tonight.
So, before school starts?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So we, we talked, uh, the last time too, about all the summer programs that are going on right now for athletics. What, what is going on with that? And, um, you know, we, I assume that, um, I'm hoping that you're reconsidering, uh, hiring Kevin again, because obviously the community is very upset.
So I've been feeling some of the emails, Laura's been forwarding on to me, I just contacted most likely AD not too long ago, about a scheduling issue for volleyball, so, the, the bottom line is, we have lots of people on staff who have filled the role of athletic director before, it could actually fill them, you know, again. There's never an AD, um, but I think I can manage it, um, based on my athletic background. Deanna Flores has been an AD, Rick Pollitt has been an AD, um, Brian Bailey's been an AD, Crystal Cole's been an AD, so there's a lot of people that you can actually break apart.
Most of these are all had full-time jobs now.
I'm not gonna, yeah, so, potentially, I'm talking about getting through the summer, and then, um, furthermore, I'm not gonna argue or debate positions in this, in this setting, when it is a special meeting, and the, the focus of this conversation actually is budget. Sure, yeah.
I do, I just have a question on that four hundred deficit, was his salary already, was that part, was that already been deducted from that four hundred, is already taking a minute to work out?
Yes, yeah.
And all of these positions that have been retired?
Are also out.
It's all in the beginning sheet.
And, and all due respect, athletics is a lot larger than I think that you're making it, and, and all due respect too, it's coming back on coaches.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I know you, I'm sorry, I wasn't gonna bring it up, but since you didn't mention that, I, I am forwarding you emails and everything. I am just doing that because, again, I mentioned it at the last meeting, I was that, you have staffs that are here for the kids. And I'm doing that for the kids, but, again, I'm also on my summer.
Sure, yeah, I don't mind reaching out, like I said, I didn't mind reaching out to the most likely AD, in fact, his daughter was just down at our house a couple weekends ago.
I am, but I guess.
Yeah, so.
Point of that is, it's beyond my contract.
I can, I can function in that role.
I'm not, I'm not saying yours, I'm just saying that it is beyond my contract.
Okay. Yeah.
Bottom line, parents need to know, my kids are sixty days away from coming to this facility, that I have looked forward to since before they were born. Parents have got to be communicated, and the decision should not be made August twenty-seventh, or whatever the day, first day before school. August twenty seventh, or whatever the day, first day before school, this freaks me out. And as a smart gentleman, talk about, sorry, I don't remember your name, smart gentleman. Parents are making decisions now as to where their kids go. I want my kids to go here, but you can bless every dollar in their wallet. Parents will talk about it and make a decision, cause their kids have to be enrolled somewhere before August. So we're like a month away from that happening. There has to be a plan that is communicated to parents, regardless of who the person is, parents have to know the plan.
I have one comment. But, you know, I'm here cause I was involved in this, this gathering of data for the students left in the district. I'm not here for the twenty twenty two, twenty three school year, I'm here for the twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine, thirty one school year. Okay, here's another local districts talk tonight about how this is a ten year process. People that are better to take stock, see if you have the metal to take part in the ten year process. A parent, no taxpayer, you have to do better. So check yourself tonight in the mirror, say, you want to take part in that process.
Agreed, and this is not vindication, this is not meanness, we are trying to do the best thing that we can for this school district, and we expect you all to do likewise.
We are.
All right, guys.
Andy, can you give us ten seconds to get our video back? Looks like you have a very random question here, has there ever been a decision regarding receiving monies from wineries again? Okay, I was in here for one of those meetings, I know there was a discussion, so we're allowed to receive them.
Discussion about it, and basically, if you were to take money from a winery being a controlled substance, you would then have to take money from, say, Altitude or somebody else. So if you're not open to one, it kind of closes the door to all.
Yeah, so that's still a closed door then, for the schools to receive donations from them?
We, we, as a group, I don't think I've ever decided one way or the other, but I know that was the discussion. If, if you open the door for one, you open the door for all. So, I mean, I suppose if you wanna have our advertisements from, you know, pot shop or, or grow operation, that's, I guess, a possibility, not one that I personally.
I think it's a more policy to not receive monies right now.
Policy around donations.
Yeah, but it.
So it's okay to.
We had, for instance, out, not William, I can't think of his first name, he tried to do a ten thousand dollar donation his first year growing, growing bot. And Ray was adamantly against it, and I'm not saying I was for it, but that was the discussion, was if, if you open the door, for one, you open the door for all. So, I mean, I guess if a person's okay with it, we can talk about it, but I, I'm not for it. We're, we're all about telling our kids to stay off dope, why would we take our sponsorship? Yeah. All right, let's move on.
Just one comment, just remember that we have, we still have over four million dollars surplus, and that's ten percent of the budget, which is double the amount, the recommended amount that you should have on hand. So we're well in excess of that, so is that saving, making cuts, whatever, to get that extra four hundred thousand dollars? What's the real cost of that down the road to the patrons of the school district? And like we were talking about, the four, the five, the ten years down the road, is it worth it? What damage will be done by saving four hundred thousand dollars now? What's the long-term effect of that decision? So you have to do a but that's, and I'll stick to that. Well, it was four point, four point four on a forty seven million, so it's not. We're still, we're all in excess of eight percent, we, we are over eight percent.
Let's go to Thursday.
Maybe more. Little things like that, you can tighten those things up, if we can work on the scheduling thing, the master schedule, where parents are aware of the college and classroom experience, and can save money and get ten credits, college credits every year through that, and give this time, give these changes time to take effect, then you're not gonna see the, and the impact of negative four hundred thousand dollars every year, it's gonna be the other way.
Yeah, but for right now, this is what we have. And I, and I agree, yeah. Next season, we need to hit it hard, this, these are the things we offer, uh, the college, the college in, in the room, I, I agree with that. I don't disagree with that at all.
Things that change the whole attitude around the school and community, discipline, attendance. I, I would, all those other things, offering those upper class, I don't know if we have the expertise to offer a map, okay, we know. We have math people that are certified, qualified to teach calculus right now on staff.
So that's a yes.
So we do have, we do have a person who can do it.
There's another one that's in the wings, is working on his masters.
All right, thank you, guys. Yes.
About who you would take your donations from? Uh, marijuana is a regular, a controlled substance, but alcohol is a regulated substance. So if you take donations from a, if you refuse to take donations from a pot shop, you will have to refuse to take donations from any pharmaceutical company also, cause they provide, or known as controlled substances. So is that your justification? You can very well say that alcohol is a regulated substance, and marijuana is a controlled substance, there are two different laws of
That was the original argument. I mean, we, we can have a bit for, a bit of education. Viniculture class, wine class tomorrow might be fine. That's, that, that, that farts of no concern to me, it's the it's the accepting from one and then being told, and we were told at the time, our district lawyer looked at it, and they said, if you take one, you take a bolt, that's why we I guess that was years ago, but, all right, so let's move on to action items. Principal's contract, entertain a motion to approve it.
There's no contract.
Those are the changes to the contract.
It says proposal. Agreement proposal. This is, this is a work product, this is not a contract, we don't have delineation, we have unnumbered paragraphs that don't go in order, they're numbered not in order. We refer to attachment A, there is no attachment A, it says, uh, item thirty five, that should be thirty nine. Um, there's a signature block, um, I'm also hesitant, I mean, I wouldn't vote on it, because I feel that we could be violating the Fair bargaining act, because this is work product. This is negotiations, um, this, this is an exempt record, this should be something discussed in executive session. This is not a contract, so I would absolve my personal liability, I wouldn't vote on it, I think, having the board back it. Violated some rules, I want a legal opinion on it from the council for the district, and I don't think this is anything more to consider.
Jason, go. All in favor of table?
I.
We have to have a time to, I don't remember, we have to have a time to bring it back, or we just table it.
It'll, it'll look different. The, usually we present updates to the board, um, it's in the same fashion as we approved them in the past. And so, uh, because it's, because it's not approved, um, within their contractual year, we'll probably have to to reframe, um, some of the things, assigning bonuses, uh, within their contract, and so, because we can't uh, once we pass the calendar year, we can't retro, um, by state law, so.
Then is, when, what's the dates? What's the good event date, to not have to do that?
Their contract, uh, rolls over July first, so tomorrow's their last.
All right, well, it is what it is then, all in favor? Of tabling it? All right, so did everyone, let's move on then, uh, adoption of the instructional material K five, English language arts, arts. King River, Prosser Heights, Witstrand Elementary. Which one have you got it? I do have one question, Craig. The invoice for this will go into this year's budget. Correct?
That's one of those things that it really, we'll probably need to order the stuff now. And if we pay it in, like, August, it's really gonna be a pretty big prepay, because it really belongs, you know, the, the benefit period is next school year. So, you know, I've got the money budgeted for next school year. So, it would really be a charge to next school year, to twenty two, twenty three.
But it'll come out of this year's financials?
No, it'll, if, if we make the payment in August.
August, after August first.
Well, the year, the school year ends August thirty one. So if we have vouchers, you know, August twenty fifth or whatever, and there's a million dollars or nine hundred thousand in there, then it'll be an expense, but it won't be, it'll be a payment, but it won't be an expense until twenty two, twenty three.
September final.
Yes.
So my question.
So it'll be a prepay, it shows a prepay.
She says this money's gonna be, this adoption's funded by ESSER, uh, learning recovery grants and dual language grants. So that's money, I'm assuming, Deanna, that you have currently in your budget?
Yes.
So you have that money?
So that S, the learning recovery, Craig's gonna have to answer that, but the dual credit grant, we already have, it's been sitting there waiting. And then the ESSER money is the learning recovery money, we're required to spend on learning recovery.
Okay, so you'll get that September first?
Yes. Okay, the ESSER grant will start September one.
Okay, and the others carry the money that you have.
So really, it's, it's a timing issue as far as, you know, the intricacies of the payments, but.
The other question is Craig, Deanna? Everybody have a chance to read through some of the books?
It's like a really good program, really comprehensive, uh, program, Deanna, so thank you for you and your team.
The committee did a great job, so now we have, now the really hard work starts.
When will the teachers be trained on it?
In August. Before school starts, and then there's, there's work at coaching and training that happens throughout the year as well.
I had kindergarten in first grade that I went over. Because years ago, kindergarten was about socializing, making sure that any of their ABCs, math, count, ten, colors, shapes, because a lot of the students didn't, because not all kids work in preschool, or we didn't have the programs we have now. I was amazed at the kind of writing that the kids were doing in the first place, you know, like, really? Great program, and you used it some, haven't you, Kevin?
Yeah, the fifth grade bilingual classroom, uh, used it, and the products they produce, I haven't, I haven't seen in education in a long time.
And so, all K five kids in the district will be using the same program?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, guys, any other questions? All right, all in favor of adopting the curriculum, please say aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. All right, guys, future meetings, July thirteen, right here, six, uh, there will be a study session on the twentieth. Here at seven, and then are we on for a safety meeting at six? All right, that will be here just prior, and then the next, uh, regular meeting after that will be the twenty seventh, here at six. I think we're gonna take probably a five minute break, and then we're gonna end up in executive session.